Yes, it's gonna go in this order though.
I'd like to call to order to connect the city council meeting for Monday, City Council Caucus for Monday, September 8th, 2025. And at this time, I'd like to call on Pastor Jiwin to do the invocation.
Hail the Lord, O Squire. Dear Father, we thank you this evening that we can come together. We thank you because your voice says prayers and supplications should be made for all those who, all our leaders and all those who have authorities. And so, God, we ask you today for all our leaders, our city council members, and all those who have gathered here today. We ask for your wisdom, for your understanding. We pray for your blessings upon them. Whatever we'll be discussing today, tonight, God will be, the decisions that will be made will be done for the ordinance and the development of our great city of Schenectady. So we ask of your blessings today, tonight, upon this meeting, in no other name but in the name of Jesus Christ, our Savior. Amen.
Amen. I'd like to call on Miki Conzies in the pledge.
I declare the use to the life of the United States of America and to the republic of the British States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If the clerk would please call the roll.
Mr. Toro? Mr. Toro? Mr. Farley? Mr. McTiverin is absent. Ms. Patrick?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Right.
Ms. Porterfield?
Here. We have thirteen items for original consideration. If the clerk would read item number one.
Item number one for original consideration, an ordinance amending and restating the bond ordinance authorizing the issuance of $29,117,825 serial bonds of the city of Schenectady to finance improvements to the Washington Avenue pump station and the water resource recovery facility at an estimated maximum cost of $29,117,875, I mean $825.
Discussing committee without objection on consent. Item number two.
Item number two for original consideration, an ordinance amending and restating the first supplemental bond ordinance authorizing an additional $2,493,424 in serial bonds of the city of Schenectady to finance improvements to the Rice Road Water Treatment Plant Phase Two at an estimated maximum cost of $8,560,536.
Discussing committee without objection on consent. Item number three.
Item number three under original consideration, a resolution calling for a public hearing for the proposed 2026 operating budget and capital budget for the city of Schenectady.
Discussing committee without objection on consent. Item number four.
Item number four under original consideration, a resolution adopting the 2025-2026 HUD Annual Action Plan.
Discussing committee without objection and on consent. Item number five.
Item number five for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the mayor to accept $45,600 in grant monies from the governor's traffic safety committee for the Schenectady Police Department.
Discussing committee without objection on consent. Item number six.
Item number six for original consideration, a resolution designating the city of Schenectady's poet laureate.
Discussing committee without objection on consent. Item number seven.
Item number seven for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the issuance of a revocable permit number 691 to Synthesis Architects for a sign they were overhanging the city's right-of-way on the face of the building at 162 J Streets, Schenectady, New York.
Discussing committee without objection on consent. Item number eight.
Item number eight for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the sale of 269 Altimont Avenue.
Discussing committee without objection on consent. Item number nine.
Item number nine for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the sale of 22 James Street.
Discussing committee without objection on consent. Item number ten.
Item number ten for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the redemption and withdrawal of 1409 Fifth Avenue from foreclosure.
Discussing committee without objection on consent. Item number eleven.
Item number eleven for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the redemption and withdrawal of 1623 Sixth Avenue from foreclosure.
Discussing committee without objection on consent. Item number twelve.
Item number twelve for original consideration, a resolution honoring Army veteran Michelle R. Johnson.
Discussing committee without objection on consent. This will, this resolution will be presented on the thirteenth at an honored event. Item number thirteen.
Item number thirteen under contract and supply, a resolution awarding the bid and contract to SW Burke Electric LLC for the city of Schenectady Fire Station Number Three and Four Generators in the amount of $178,000.
Discussing committee without objection and on consent. If there's nothing to call, come before the city council caucus, I ask for a motion to adjourn. Moved by Ms. Patrick, seconded by Mr. Williams. All in favor? Aye. We're adjourned. I'd like to call to order the Schenectady City Council meeting for Monday, September 8th, 2025. This time, I would call for approval of the minutes of August 25th, 25. Moved by Mr. Williams, seconded by Mr. Farley. All those in favor? Aye. At this time, I'd ask the clerk for any communications and petitions.
Communications presented to the city council for Monday, September 8th, 2025. Under official, there were none. Under general, there were none. And under petitions, there were none.
Thank you. I would call on council members for any committee reports. At this time, we'll have privilege of the floor related to the legislative agenda. So just want to be clear to folks who don't come on a regular basis, the legislative agenda is the printed document there. So if you wish to speak to something that is on that document, this would be your time to speak. At this time, I have two people who are signed up to speak. First person is Adonis Richards.
Good evening. I'll keep this short. I just want to say thank you to the city council and the committee members for voting and putting in this for the city's poet laureate. It's an honor and a pleasure to be able to serve my city, but also be able to serve in a position that, in the 364 years this city has been a city, this has not been the position that we have had. And to be the first is, is something that I take full honor and privilege in, and am blessed to be able to do so. As the grandson of an English teacher, I'm super excited and prepared to put together programming and creative writing workshops for all different types of city members. So yes, I'm excited. I love the position and I'm looking forward to seeing what we all come out, what comes out of this from us all. So, thank you.
Thank you. Philip Miller, Esquire.
Good evening. My name is Philip Miller. I'm an attorney from Albany, New York. I'm here to speak in favor of article, or item number nine, so 269.
Sir, could you speak into the microphone? We're having trouble hearing you.
Is this better?
Yes.
My name is Philip Miller. I'm an attorney here from Albany, New York. I'm here to speak in favor of your approval of item number nine, the sale of 269 Altimont Avenue to the Guiton family. The Guiton family was in my office. I've met with them. They're quite elderly. The tax issue had just, quite frankly, got away from them. The law at their age, Mrs. Guiton is really the one who is principally handling the family affairs. She's quite elderly. Her husband's quite elderly. I think her age, the loss of her son, and the fact her husband is diagnosed with Alzheimer's just got away from her. I have over $40,000 sitting in my escrow account to pay any taxes that may be owed on this property. And I have assurance and proof that there are additional funds that are available for the asking if additional taxes are owed on the property. I ask for your approval. I ask for your, your, your understanding. This family just fell into some bad times and, and we're trying to bail them out, or I'm trying to bail them out. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have no one else signed up to speak on the legislative agenda, so I declare this public comment closed. Right now, I would ask for a approval of the legislative agenda. Moved by Ms. Patrick, seconded by Mr. Williams. All those in favor? Aye. Now, I'll ask for privilege of the floor regarding any city business. I have five people signed up to speak. And just a reminder, it's, you do have a three-minute, no one's gone over it yet, but I just want to remind you that you have three minutes for, to speak. The first person is San, Santo Palmieri.
Thank you for the opportunity to come up here and speak. I've had an issue with the House loud noise for the last seven years. I've discussed it with the police department. I've called it in several times. I don't know what else to do. So I came to the, I came here, hopefully you guys can help. You know, loud music, two, one, two, three o'clock in the morning, windows rattling. I, I don't know what else to do. So I'm here asking for help.
Uh, sir, we, we, this, we don't get to, this was, this is not a dialogue, so we don't get to talk back to you. But if you would want to stay till the end of the council meeting, we could speak with you or give you the number to contact to do that.
Do I just wait or?
Yes, certainly. Yes. Yes. You're welcome. Thank you. Christine Kirstein? Christine Kirstein? Karen Kirstein?
Awesome. Hi, my name is Karen Kurstine. I'm here tonight because I love Schenectady. I love the community, the schools, downtown, Upper Union, and the park. But the heart of me is in my street, Woodland Avenue. When my husband became terribly ill in 2021, just after my father died and during COVID, I needed help. My neighbors rounded the wagons. They walked my dog. They tended to my mail and, and paper during our long weeks at the hospital. They brought over countless meals. Why? Because we take care of each other in this city. For the past 25 years, I have applied for a street permit so we could have an evening potluck to get to know our new neighbors and to catch up with the old ones. Honestly, I do not get the street barricades for me. I get them for the kids and for the elders. The barricades keep our vulnerable residents safe, and generations of kids have loved the Black Party. One neighbor remembers the first out-front street party dating back to 1974. Our most senior person says it happened even before that in backyards. For 25 years, I filled out this one-page permit and paid $10. I did this, I did this this year on May 10th. Mid-August, I called the check on the permit because I had heard nothing. I was told that had not yet been approved and, oh, by the way, there's an additional $87 fee. That is a tenfold increase in fees from previous years. I received the permit approval dated September 2nd for a September 6th event. I am challenging the new permit application and tenfold increase in fees. This new permit, almost twenty page of confusing forms and documents. It's the same application that the Italian, the Greek, and the Caribbean fests had to fill out, also taking place this past weekend. We are required to pay 50% of what is paid by a citywide festival. Yet our potluck involves only 30 people. Just for comparison, I also found the Niskiuna one-page Black Party permit. This administrative decision effectively eliminates neighborhoods from access to this service. It negatively affects more than our North End street with mostly white residents. It is also about communities in Mount Pleasant and, or off of Albany Street, including families of color. I believe there should be two standards, one for a basic permit and one for a festival. And I believe that $87 plus $10 is not manageable for most Schenectady residents. If you don't want to issue permits, be honest and just say that. I'll be calling each one of you individually. I'm not reaching out to cause you problems. I'm reaching out because we all share the same passion for and love of Schenectady. Why would the city discourage strong neighborhoods where residents know and care for each other? We need to work together to change this unreasonable administrative decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
I did make a packet for each of you. I think you should see the permit.
Thank you. Anthony Carrata?
Good evening, Madam President, Mayor, Council. Before I get to speak on tonight, I want to make something clear. This is strictly my opinion, what I'm about to say. Two, I am not a racist person. I'm a proud member of the human race. And three, what I'm about to say, if I offend anybody, I apologize ahead of time. Get that cleared out and straight ahead. Now, it seems lately today that individuals have been attacking law enforcement on all three levels, federal, state, and local. As a law-based citizen, I stand with, support, and respect all our brave men and women in law enforcement on all three levels, federal, state, and local. Lately, on the federal level, ICE, we've been in issue of agents in ICE in the communities. Recently, on Channel 6 YouTube page, I happened to see a video of so-called community groups and activists protesting over in the area of Troy, issues with ICE in the community. They have been believing lies purposely perpetrated by the media and unfortunately government bodies like this. The lies are, one, that ICE is out there attacking people in shadows attacking people, lie. They're kidnapping people, lie. Destroying families, lie. Not working with local law enforcement, lie. And also being violent. Now, things with law enforcement in general, they're only doing violent force if necessary, if necessary. Thing is, when law enforcement on all three levels are out there doing their job, people are attacking them. So what do you expect law enforcement supposed to do? Now, the fact is, here's the truth. When ICE, and hopefully we won't have an issue of ICE here in the city of Schenectady, but I'm telling this ahead of time, so in case there is a problem, you're all aware. When ICE is out there confronting individual or individuals, this is what they're doing, okay? If someone's an immigrant and ICE is confronting them, they're making sure that their paperwork, as in documentations, is correct and up to date. If someone's here on a work visa or a student visa, also making sure that their paperwork, as in the visa, is correct and up to date. Now, thing is that while they're doing that, they're also looking at the background checks, make sure there's no warrants out there for the individuals, make sure that the individual is not a member of a very notorious gangs worldwide. Example, number 13, that they're not part of the drug trade, as in drug mules and whatnot. They're making sure they're not a part of the very legal mess, as in human insect trafficking, and also members of very dangerous diseases. Hence, we had smallpox and whatnot. That's exactly what ICE is doing, making sure the background of the paperwork and background on the individuals or individual is up to date and correct and accurate. That's what they're doing, not the lies that people believe in. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Kishman Desroff? Probably getting that really messed up.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Councils. I'm here to speak about 39 Robinson. In 2018, June 19, my mother purchased 39 Robinson Street for me, myself, myself, my wife, and five kids. I tried to do a transfer from her name to my name. She's the one who's been taking care of my children all the time. So during a transfer, she, in 2020, she co-signed with my stepfather to buy an ex-property. 39 Robinson is her resident. That's where she lives. I hired an attorney to transfer my paperwork, reaching out to the council for the liars at the city hall. They have been pushing me around with the paperwork, trying to settle for $10,000 because they said my mother was not living there. I've been the working one there with my wife, paying all bills. The tax has been paid in my mother's name, all other documents. The only thing that's been paid is in my name, is the, the light bill, phone bills, and all necessities. I am asking the council, as an employee of the city of Schenectady, what are you guys trying to do? Put a family of seven on the street to sleep? Why, why pushing me around? From the first, first, from my attorney information, they told me they're settling it for $20,000. Reaching out, back and forth, this, the attorney told my attorney, we'll go for $20,000. Why are you a family who works below $50,000? Where would they find $10,000 to settle something like this? I am asking the council, I am a, I am a standing member of, employee, and I'm a standing member in this committee, in this community, doing community service. I have my pastor with me here, standing with me, who could vow with me what the documents and what I'm seeing. And I'm asking you guys as a council, and you guys work for the people and see this skip. I have five kids in the Schenectady School District, three is top, top three students that they have for Schenectady School District. And this is what I want to know, why it's been months, why I'm being pressured like this? It's frustrating. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have the documents here from the pastor.
Thank you, sir. Judy Atchinson? Judy Atchinson?
Good evening. My name is Judy Atchinson. For the first 30 years of my life, I lived as a composer and a musician touring the world and playing music. And then, Father Hogan came to me and asked me to work with the community. And I left my other jobs and re-founded Quest, an organization finally felt with a donation from the Kendall family. We are dedicated to having a safe environment for the neighborhood children to legalize and be themselves. We are the only charitable organization in this area providing these essential services. Our goal is to install a good sense of community and self-respect in those that participate in our programs. We offer children a concultural experience with trips to Proctors, New York City, SPAC, and other places at which they may have a lifetime experience. This being will help lead to productive young adults and will keep for them a lifetime of memories. We believe this help will make productive young adults and ever-improving neighbors and neighborhoods for all. Many of our attendants have gone to college and have great careers. And they come back and visit. Some of them I've known 30 years. We are inarguably a bonus and a great thing for your community. However, we have been battling a battle with those not winning our, our property. It's being damaged and abused by substance abusers. We have a lot of abuse. We have a lot of abuses in our area. I don't think any of you are really aware of the substance abuses in much of this city. We have had the areas tried and destroyed on several bases. Our, I can't see. It's frequently damaged, and we understand that we are not having a duty free from, from anything. But we would very much like to have better help from the Police Department. We would like to feel that we were supported by the community. Too much stuff. We are just waiting for something wonderful to happen. And to have you get along and be part of the wagon that goes to change a whole area of your city and the people living in it. I'm asking for help. I'm asking for not even really money, but help. Come and visit our buildings. Look at how beautiful they have to, the buildings are beautiful, beautiful. The books are gorgeous. Please visit, please call. My name is Judy Atchinson. Thank you for listening to this long letter. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no one else signed up to speak for city business, so I declare this public comment closed. At this time, any miscellaneous business of the council? Mr. Williams?
Thank you. So first, and, um, I think in holding true to how I always start off my comments, I just want to thank everyone that came out to speak. Uh, sincerely, this is your opportunity to share your comments, concerns, frustrations in some instances with us. Um, I'd like to caption, rather than speaking to each person individually, definitely as you heard earlier from Council President Porterfield, please stay after to have those candid discussions with us. Um, but sincerely, I appreciate the context you provide. Uh, I think oftentimes our actions are assumed to have a negative intent, but I challenge everyone to look at things objectively or have an opportunity to hear another perspective. Uh, but sincerely, anything that we do as a city can always have areas of improvement. And I myself am always presenting my authentic thoughts and challenging myself to see things from different lenses. And that is not possible without your shared commitment to being present. So thank you. With respect to the poet laureate, Adonis Richards, I am beyond excited for what he is going to be able to achieve in this position, collaboratively with the committee that has been stood up. Uh, I'm a member of the New York State My Brothers Keeper, and one of the tenants that they say actively is, "We lift as we climb." And since being in this position, this was one of the tenants I've always held true of how do you provide opportunities, but then also inclusive in certain, inclusion in certain areas. So with this opportunity, I'm excited to see the community have a different perspective, one that is rooted in poetic symmetry and a shared commitment to creative expression, but also broadening our awareness. Uh, I think as we sit in these seats, it's very easy to live within our biases. But once we leave this table, once we leave this facility, as was mentioned, this is the responsibility of our roles, to be engaged in the neighborhoods and the communities. So sincerely, that is one that I look forward to hearing this position shape and capture. And I'm excited for the, the new future that lies, not just for this individual, but for the trailblazing nature that he'll be able to set behind him. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Patrick?
Yes, thank you. I too would love to congratulate Mr. Richards on becoming the city's first poet laureate. I'm looking forward to many opportunities to hear his, hear his voice and his, and his art. And I'm looking forward to what I hope will be the impact that he's going to have on youth and adults in our community in terms of helping to inspire that love of literature. I wanted to thank Ms. D' Toro for her leadership with the Little Italy Festival this past weekend and our colleague, Councilman Mr. Mutiveren, for his leadership on the committee that put together the Caribbean Festival. Also, of course, we had our Greek Festival and our Stockade Art Show. I feel like I'm forgetting one all of a sudden. And the health fair that the city put on here on, on Sunday as well. It was just a wonderful weekend for our residents to come out and enjoy all sorts of wonderful food and music and community. A note about the HUD funds, the Community Development Block Grants. My colleague, Mr. Farley, noted last week that I was often on the other side of that table when I worked in nonprofit management. And I know how important those funds are for so many of our agencies in this community and the work that they do to support so many residents, especially those that, you know, really need, really need assistance, whether it's housing or, or other types of, of things. So, um, you know, I really am glad that, that passed, and I wanted to thank our staff, especially in the Development Office, for all the work that they do to make that happen. I want to thank the Police Department for securing yet another traffic safety grant. It's back-to-school time. I just want to, you know, all, anything that we can all be doing to make sure that we're driving safely, but especially right now as we are wanting to make sure that our children are, are getting safely into the schools. So everybody pay close attention to the speed limit and other traffic measures as you're driving around right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Farley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to first of all say thank you to everyone that came out and spoke tonight. As always, your words are very important and, you know, the things that you express to us are not taken for granted. We understand the weight of the decisions that we make, and that's why we like to make informed decisions. And to my colleague's earlier point, we can't do that in a real genuine way without listening to the voice of the people. I think this weekend represents probably the best of us as a city, as we talk about all the different events, fairs, and festivals that when I'm, we celebrate building community. I would like to, for us to keep in mind that it's great to come together as a community for a day, for a cause, but it's much better to come together as a community and build and maintain community amongst us, just because that's just who we are. Therefore, any problem that we face or anything that we celebrate, we do so collectively and as a community. So I definitely want to give a shout out to everyone who participated in leadership and who attended those events. And I also want to give a huge, huge shout out to Schenectady High School varsity football and cheer team. They got their first victory in a long time the other day. And just seeing the pride in those young people's faces, knowing that they went out there and gave it all they had and came up with a victory was incredibly rewarding, and I look forward to many more. So I welcome us to come, you know, together and support them, cheer them on. But it's great when they win, but they're also going to need us there on the times that things don't go their way. That's when we, they often need us more. So I want to make sure that we maintain and keep that same energy for our young people who are participating in sports and other things, other events, pro-social activities out the community. And lastly, um, I think that we have been given a gift in the residents like Adonis Richardson in our community for what he represents. And I'm just not, you know, really happy for him.
I'd like to hear some.
I'm sorry? I, I can't hear you. Oh, okay, okay. I was talking to you, I was just facing that way, okay? Let me do it like this.
All right.
Okay?
You don't have to turn your back to the audience.
So we are, we are blessed to have people like Adonis Richardson. I'm not pointing any elbows or anything in our community. I'm very grateful for us, and I think that what we'll do as far as this poet laureate, what this does is this reinforces our culture as a city. So it's about keeping culture and sharing culture and maintaining, building our community. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Farley. All right. Um, Ms., Ms. Carr standing in for Mr. McCarthy.
Yeah, so the mayor's office would like to thank all of city staff who helped the success of all the festivals that happened this weekend. It couldn't have happened without everyone from OGS, police, fire, and all the staff who participated in the health fair. It wouldn't have been successful if everyone came together, worked together, so everyone had a safe, safe weekend. So the mayor's office thanks everyone for their participation and cooperation. And I really appreciate the comment about the street closure. That is something that the mayor's office has been working to improve because the one-pager was not giving all the information. And these events couldn't have been successful without that packet. The packet allows all the information up in one spot, as opposed to all departments coming, asking the mayor's office, or asking the coordinator. Uh, it is a work in progress, so we do ask for any suggestions that you have. And I do appreciate the comment of multiple categories. So I do appreciate that, Karen. So, thank you.
That's it. Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, I'd like to also thank everyone for coming out tonight to make, for making your comments, to making us aware of things that are going on and what your concerns are. Because truly, our, our goal as a council and as the administration is to make life as best as possible for our residents. So I sincerely appreciate all of you. Want to thank Ms. Carver and her team in development for the block grant allocations. And I really want to call out the fact that this year we've seen new projects that we've not seen before. And that's a goal that we've been working, that's been, she's been working towards with her team, so I'm glad to see it. And I don't know that there's anyone here from that, one of those new groups, but congratulations to all of you who never got funding before, but has gotten funding this time. So we're really glad that we're able to lift up new programs within the city. And this weekend, as, as you've heard, there were multiple events going on. I made almost all of them, not quite, and even though we had rain, rain did not stop. Couple of the events, it didn't stop. The Stockade Event went to the next day, but other than that, the other events, events took place. And so it was great to see people out mingling and having a good time. And it also drew visitors from our city, so we can just kind of showcase who we are here in the City of Schenectady. And finally, I'd like to thank the panel that was convened to choose the poet laureate. I know that, you know, it took a lot of work, and we greatly appreciate volunteers stepping up to do the work. So if any of the panelists are here and you want to stand up, we'd be happy to have you stand, and we can just thank you for that. We appreciate your work as residents and how you, you know, giving of your, your personal time to do that. And finally, I would like to thank the person that was chosen to be the poet laureate, Adonis Richards. Uh, we, just to be clear, the council had nothing to do with those decisions. We were just made aware, and so we're just pleased with the outcome. And Mr. Richards, thank you again for, for you giving to the city in this way. And we're looking forward, looking forward to the work. I've seen your work before, so I'm looking forward to the work that you will do on behalf of the city. And I know you'll do us proud. Thank you very much. And with that, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn. Move by Ms. Patrick, second by Mr. Williams. All those in favor? Aye. We're adjourned. Have a good evening. They are, they're stands, really.